No, you're right. I had a client yesterday who was some elderly gentleman, he and his wife, when he was on a walker. And he'd made it about three quarters of the way across the street before the life change.
See, we can't even hear it. Say it. Why can't you do the video?
See on the side of it, there's a button to mute the microphone.
Oh, there is.
Pressed externally is the only reason I know that.
Testing.
Testing, one, two, testing, yeah.
I can't hear anything. I can't look at these. And I didn't set it up. Where's Andrew? Andrew's not here.
I was only kidding.
He's setting it up. I didn't even set it up, so I don't.
Well, we're gonna be out this for a little.
And I'm just a stand-in. I don't know what I'm. This is not fair for me to come back and do this.
Sorry, folks, having some technical difficulties.
Red test. Well, speaking of. To change that is to close and open the meeting, so I don't want to do that.
Can we just send everybody online, like a group chat and say we're shutting it down and restarting it?
Got that right.
Should I mic Sarah the host and is there any issue with that? Uh, can you guys hear us online?
Should we give the owls a second? It's, oh, it was, it was blinking its eyes.
Is this the one I need to rekey zone?
I can see and hear you. It's fine on my end.
Welcome everyone. It is six oh two. Councilmember Thomas here. Councilmember Beth. Councilmember Luna Ladd. If you would all join me, please, in the optimal pledge of the meeting, a moment of silence. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda or accept any modifications.
I think, as we discussed in our agenda preparation meeting today, I think we staff would like to pull from the consent agenda. The approval of the practicing Patrick's Day Parade. To work on a few conditions of approval with the applicant and we do have time for that to be heard on the. August sixth meeting. So it would not be pulled and put on the regular agenda tonight. It would be pulled from the consent agenda tonight and be put on the August sixth agenda.
So I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
Edwards moves to approve the amended agenda.
All in favor? Let's move on to public comments about items not on the agenda. I think there are a few people. Shannon, I think you got your name now.
Hi, I'm Shannon Grant, one twenty-six, West Seven Street, and I did not intend to come to the council tonight. But I was out on a walk this evening and felt compelled to be here, want to share. My concerns about safety of citizens trying to cross the street, even in the crosswalks. Just with the traffic not slowing down or not adhering to the law. That that's concerning for our safety and for safety of our visitors. Then, in addition to that, is I asking the city council to revisit. And reconsider the things that are taking up space on our sidewalks. Between the signs, the tables for four, with or without humans, considering in the seats of four. Clothing racks and other things that are on our sidewalks. It is very difficult to pass. Just as an ambulating person, but I can't imagine trying to navigate with a. With a walker or even a child stroller. Remind you that the signs are not a part of our code currently. And just that it's remains a concern of people who are trying to be in our community. Then, my sorry, I don't stop yet, is I wanted to say I was enjoying a cup of coffee this weekend and I noticed. Our community enforcement officer was out doing service and I believe ticketing, I don't know for sure, I did look. But watching for people parking in the crosswalks and I really appreciated that, so thank you for. For that, any influence that you've had or that you've had more. Policing to be aware of that, that that also is a concern for people who are in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all.
And maybe perhaps when we talk about strategic planning, we can talk about where are the consideration of the. Our sidewalks and sound board signs fall in that planning.
It's on our retreat agenda.
I figure.
I'm Jane Harrison and I'm here on behalf of PB Swims with some good news. Today I found out, the director of the library told me that Lake County Intermediate School where our pool is, is going to be included in this feasibility study. So that's good news. And then, other good news, PB Swims submitted our citizens initiative petition. Today, so that's been along. We've gotten some good feedback on our survey. You know, our survey, we were told it was very amateur, but we've been getting some good comments. And. A number of people have said, PB Swims, you should work with the city, the county, state, you know, work together and they're right. We have PB Swims in our annual report. That was the second to the last paragraph. We need to all come together. And so, thank you, city council members for working with us. Thank you very much and we hope to continue this good relationship. I did send this cartoon. That pig, you know, kind of paints a thousand words if. City clerk Bushman's able to put it up. If not, we can save it for another time. Thank you.
Let me, can I clarify, you were referencing the newsletter or putting it up on our website or where, where did you?
Just showing the people here tonight. Can you do that?
Like this in public comment.
I sent a PDF of a cartoon by Jeff Malick. Fras, I don't know if any of you are familiar with. This cartoon, but it's, it just, it just says a lot, but yeah, if you could put it up tonight, if you can't. Maybe I'll blow up one and bring it to the next time I speak.
Let's do this. Let's figure out if that's possible for us to do and we can, if we can't. Maybe do it at the end of the meeting in the public comment at the end. Will that be okay?
That's fine. Thank you very much, everybody, for serving us.
There anyone else? Please.
I talked about the lobbying issue in the editorial in the Denver Big One Sunday. Said Colorado's new lobbyist disclosure platform built by the Secretary of State Gina Rizel. Is a huge step in the right direction, so Coloradoans can see who is spending more at the capital influence hearing. Before I talk about how Lake County made a list in the Denver paper, one of the top ten. Spenders in that area. This is an article in today's paper, Denver paper about Breckenridge. Through the third time since February, a local judge has cited a non-community over homeowners who are determining the restriction of short-term rentals. Are lawful. Breckenridge's desire to limit perceived bill effects of SDRs is a legitimate purpose, the judge wrote in an eighteen-page order. And the ordinances are rationally related to this end. Although the ordinances, the lawsuits stated that the ordinances have lawful purposes of increasing the supply and affordability of workforce housing within the town. But the ordinance has nevertheless violated planning to Colorado statutory prohibition prohibited. Prohibition on rent control. The judge dismissed the five federal law claims and again, one state law allegation that Breckenridge unlawfully imposed rent control to a state judge in Breckenridge. Land found, the judge found that the. Counter ordinances are rationally related to control and associated noise, parking and waste disposal. Do not violate homeowners' due process rights and do not discriminate against out-of-state homeowners and do not unduly. Harm interstate commerce. Those four things were the federal claims that they had in that theory. And. The town's approach to the regulation of short-term rentals is based on extensive stakeholder engagement and a sound understanding of business licensing. According to Breckenridge's town attorney, Kristen Lawfry. And another piece of data in this thing was. They capped the number of short-term rentals in Breckenridge Act two thousand two hundred, split the town into four zones with cap reach. Zone and made sure a rental license is non-transferable. I'm not sure how much time I guess I have sixty seconds.
Twenty-eight seconds.
There was an interesting article in Sunday's paper about the homeless ruling. That went to the Supreme Court for Grants Pass, Oregon. And there was a city called Folsom, California. That has eighty thousand residents, so I'm only going to go right to the bottom here. And they noticed a jump in homelessness since the pandemic from twenty to one hundred and thirty this year. So I'm concerned that we face that same threat. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in chambers who would like to comment on items on the agenda? Is there anyone online who would like to comment on items not on the agenda? The none, let's move on to the consent agenda. As the city administrator mentioned, we have. Moved the TUP for the practice parade and Saint Patrick's parade to our next. City council meeting, so. What remains is approval of the minutes from meetings earlier in the year and a resolution to standard. The sales tax, that's for us.
Five seconds.
All in favor? Moving on, let's go on to presentations and discussions. We have the county manager, Tim Bergman, with us tonight regarding the county city transit program. Thank you so much for being here, Tim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Tim Bergman. I serve as the county manager. Tonight I'm here with. Good news for you. Earlier today, the Gordon County Commissioners awarded a. Contract to Downtowner Holdings LLC for the local transit service. As you may recall, in twenty twenty and twenty-one, the transit feasibility study was completed. For a local transit route in Leavenhill and Lake County. From there, the county applied for and was awarded multimodal transportation and mitigation options funding. Which is federal dollars and state dollars through the Department of Transportation. So that funding. Is good for three years. This contract will be good for three years. Part of that MMOF funding went to a capital purchase for the purchase of two ADA compliant coaches. And then for operating and administrative expenses for three years to operate this program. We had put out the RFP for this. Realizing with in conversations with CDA and the Transit Consultants Fair and Peers, which were presented to council before. There's probably a better route to bid this out than for us to try and stand it up on our own. Downtowner Holdings was the bid we, only bid we received, but they're qualified firm. They meet all the RFP requirements and FTA assurances and financial obligations. Downtowner Holdings comes as a turnkey operation. So they will, with this, if we work through the contracting process, they're going to lease two coaches. To provide the service initially until the county coaches arrive and then they will, they will operate those. Downtowner will hire locally, so the driver, part-time drivers will be hired locally as well as a local transit manager. And the way that Downtowner operates. Okay, it's true of my memo, but for your, for your purposes in the memo, you have the map of what the deviated fixed route looks like, so. I'll start, I'll start a point at the Lake Forest Community, go out to Mountain Valley and Mountain View Village. To be able to connect those communities to the city core. There are stops along the way. There will be one in Stringtown, one at CMC, one at. The hospital, the existing body jobs we have. Throughout the city for the summit stage and eco-transit. And we will enter the great parking lot wars in twenty twenty-four to figure out any safe way to stop. But the deviated fixed route downtown the holdings has, they have. An app for your phone. They also have a call-in dispatch line. Both are bilingual, so the. Right now, if we work through the contracting process, we'll figure out the, the timing and all that, but it will be five days a week, ten hours a day. So the way it works is if you're at home and, you know, can't get to a bus stop or, you know, need. You know, or whatever, mobility impaired for whatever reason. You can go into the app, you can call into dispatch, put in your address and that sends to the driver so long the route they'll go to your. Pick up or drop off location, so you can be picked up or dropped off at home. And with that, doing reference tracks, reference checks with them, Downtowner has a specialty for small micro-transit in mountain regions. I see excellent feedback from Beaver Creek, Denver, Aspen, Jackson, Wyoming, Big Sky, Montana, and Lacer County, California. They also have operations throughout Utah, other Colorado cities, Idaho. And other California resort towns. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you already have or talk about anything further if you'd like.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Bergman? Start with Christian.
I, sounds like there is still interest to, for the county to purchase units. Do you have an ETA on that? And the last time we discussed, it was kind of like, you know, we won't certain units. Is that still the same case? Yes, so those coaches are on order, so we will have two of those. So fingers crossed, we should receive those in December or January, but the contracting has been completed with those and those are on order.
Okay, cool. So they're just waiting.
Yeah, but in the meantime, they're gonna lease, yeah, do their stuff. So, cool, thanks.
Well, first of all, it's one of the things I'm most excited about in the community. So thanks for all the work, Tim, and to the county, everybody who pitched in. I'm really excited to see this. Happen. Who will the point of contact be with? Downtowner.
Sure. So they are going to hire a local transit manager, so that will be someone, you know, from this community. So that will be our point of contact, contact. We'll have a local transit manager to manage this program and then. You're working with the county on, on feedback or any, any contract improvements that need to be made. Then there's a regional manager that kind of has like the western part of Colorado and then there's higher-ups of the company, but.
The local manager will maybe a downtowner employee?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll interface with someone at the county? And is that, would that be you or is there like a department that oversee that or?
Currently, I am the project manager on them, so yes, it will be me. Until I find some more support to live, but for now it will be me.
In the future, if we were, as a community, to want to stand this up on our own, does that? I haven't looked at the details of this agreement with them for three, but does that? Give the possibility of adding a smooth transition after term in?
Yes, so a couple of things there. So during this time with the initial three-year period with the MMOF funding, that gives us time to pursue other federal transportation administration funding. For this, we actually have one source of that that we're working on transferring with Summit County Government for the summit stage. The nice thing is with Downtowner, should they work out, they're already, they've met all the FTA assurances and compliance. So if we do stay with them, the, the new funding source won't require a new contractor, new RFP of procurement. But yes, in the future, should we find that Downtowner hasn't been a good partner, hasn't do that, or if we think between the city and the county, we can pull off. Managing this ourselves. That's definitely a possibility. One of the nice things from every reference that I called and checked with, that they all provided, you know, without asking was just the. The ability for Downtowner to be flexible, so any changes that are, need to be made, any feedback that is given. They're very quick on that. They're very adaptable, you know, and as they operate the program, they also provide feedback on. Maybe this, this time doesn't work, maybe this will be better for people, so.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Bergman? Yeah, I'm kind of curious about the micro-transit, which you mentioned, so is, is that aspect of this program, the deviated routes? I understand micro-transit to be more on demand and smaller vehicles, so Downtowner will do that as part of their program.
Yeah, well, it still will be with the coaches, but I use, I use micro-transit as that they do operate micro-transit in other communities as well. But this could be considered that as well, so that deviated fixed route.
Okay, and how big are the coaches? Are they quite big or are there some smaller ones to do?
They are, they're fourteen-person.
And then I can't recall, are we going to charge people to ride?
No, this will be a fair free service.
And any requirements to take advantage of the deviated routes?
No, basically, basically just within that, that area, which does capture a majority of the population. And then, you know, I outlined in the memo that, you know, the city and county have collaborated on the local match for that funding. So it is in your twenty-four budget and we'll, you know, plan to save it for the twenty-five budget, should you like to move forward.
And thank you for providing the numbers in your memo. I have a question regarding, so I, I understand from your memo that Downtowner will supply some. Some vehicles until the order is fulfilled. When. You get the actual buses, any plans to wrap them or do signage or?
Yes, it will be Lake County branded, so have the yellow man seal on it and I think it's such a kind of transit. Kind of basic, but they'll be white buses with. Their county transit and that's the logos on there.
Can we get a seal, city seal on there too? The last question, Mr. Bergman.
When, when will this?
Sure, so the, the board approved it today, so we will start the contracting process with Downtowner. So probably as we work through getting the contract appeal finalized for Downtowner, for them to stand something up like this is for sixty days. So I'm anticipating end of September, middle of October, the service will be live.
Fantastic news. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Anything else?
You know, this is the first project that I ever got involved with, uh, luckily. It was with Kill Myself pre-COVID with Mary Drake. At the time, Mary Drake loved it, so it's crazy to see it actually go through as. As one of my first projects, not even on city council at that time, just as a young nineteen-year-old.
Let's move on to our second presentation from community builders regarding the twenty twenty-five going down the city comprehensive claiming.
Yeah. Hi all, good evening. I don't know, can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Okay, excellent. I can't see everyone in the room. I don't know if Chapin is there and he wants to provide any introduction tonight before I get started.
I'm here. I'd love to introduce you, Brooke. So for the, for the Zoom participants, I'm Chapin, I'm the planning director for the city of Loveville. And I've had the pleasure of working with Lake County planning staff and Brooke Murphy with community builders. Initial conversations regarding joint conference of planning efforts with the county. And in your packet, Brooke has included an introduction to community builders and their. Their background and their purpose. Uh, their background and their purpose and their capabilities, um, essentially Brooke works for community builders. Um, it was a nonprofit specializes in, in, in planning, um, so still too much of uh, Brooke's thunder. Without further ado, I'd love to have Brooke um, introduce you to this uh, this project where we'd like to work on.
Yeah, thank you, Chapin. Um, Sarah, are you, do you have the slides handy that you can pull up for me?
Yes, I do. I apologize, I don't have a voice, but I'm happy to put the slides up, so just give me a moment.
Great. Um, and while Sarah is doing that, thank you so much. Um, like Chapin said, I'm Brooke Murphy, uh, with Community Builders. And tonight I'm here just to provide a brief update on the project proposal uh, for a joint county-city comprehensive plan. Uh, with Lake County and the city of Leadville, uh, so you can go to the next slide. Uh, so really, we're currently in what we call the groundwork stage. Um, this is the very, very early stages of project development and discovery. Uh, where we're building the political will, um, building project understanding, building community buy-in. Um, and working really closely and collaboratively, uh, both with the city and county staff in designing uh, some of the systems and processes. To carry out um, a successful project. And as this is my first opportunity to get in front of city council tonight, introduce myself, um, you know, I wanted just to provide some insight to you all. And to the community at large into how we, which is community builders, um, and county and city staff who have been involved. Um, arrived at this really unique project proposal. Uh, for, for a joint comprehensive plan, um, as well as an update on where we are right now and um, what are some of the next steps coming up in the process? Next slide. Um, this is just kind of where I'm headed tonight, um, we can go to the next one. So I just want to start us off by maybe just taking one step back. And thinking big picture, you know, when we think about what the big ideas and why we're here talking about a joint comprehensive planning effort. Um, you know, just want to recognize that Lake County and the city of Leadville, like many Colorado mountain towns right now. Are experiencing pretty significant change, um. You know, and it's really important that we try to tackle that change with clarity. And, and vision and direction and, and good planning. And that's hard to do, um, it's not easy. And in particular, it can be really difficult to do this in ways that. Bridge jurisdictional differences, for example, between a municipality and a county. Um, but also just between different communities that make up our community. Right? So considering um, the perspectives of newcomers and long-term or long-time residents. Um, balancing, you know, the region's really rich mining history with uh, new recreation economy. Um, finding ways to provide housing while maintaining this community that we cherish. So, you know, how do we address some of these really big challenges while preserving our environment? The things that we care about and that we love about community. Um, you know, in, in quality of life. And so at the most basic level, that's really what this project is about. Is, is helping the communities of Lake County and the city of Leadville. To sort through and start to work through some of those questions. So next slide. Um, and the project also partially is born out of the recognition that um, both. Entities need updated comprehensive plans. Um, so as a bit of background, um, the Lake County actually started having these conversations with community builders, um. Maybe over a year ago. Um, you know, approached us and started talking about how the community might start to work through these really type, these types of really challenging questions. In a way where um, we can come together and build a really strong cohesive vision, um, well, identity as a community and also vision for the future. Um, ultimately, the county needs a new comprehensive plan, um, and it just so happens that the city of Leadville. Uh, will also be edging toward um, a comprehensive plan update. Um, looking for something that can provide. Uh, the policy and direction so we can more effectively manage growth and change in ways that are better aligned with who we are as a community. Um, in shaping a strong economy and in caring for our community. Um, so when we started having these early conversations, uh, we invited the county to attend one of our. Uh, community builders training sessions, which is called Building Better Places, um, next slide. Building Better Places is, um, you know, over the course of three days, it's really a lot of um, strategic thinking and a lot of strategic planning. Um, and a lot of the conversations that they were having were, were around how we can get on the same page. Um, and what we need to do in order to move forward, uh, this desire to develop um, a shared vision for the future. And better um, collaboration and coordination between uh, the county and, and the city in addressing these issues. So. Following, oh, thank you, I can hang out right there. Um, following the training, Lake County applied and was awarded um, our technical assistance grant. Um, and, and at that point, we started really having a lot more um, discussions with the city of Leadville and city staff. And through these conversations, we have started to explore what it would look like. To integrate our planning efforts, um, recognizing that both the county and city need plan updates. And that ideally, these plans would be really well-aligned and plug into one, plug into one another in a really effective way. Um, and that's become the key focus of this project and this, this entire project approach. Next slide. So what we're talking about is an integrated city-county comprehensive plan. Um, which is a pretty unique idea. And so naturally, I think this raises some questions, right? Um, why, why pursue this? Why muddy the waters, if you will? Um, what are the pros and cons of this kind of approach? And so today I just wanted to sum up some of the key things that we've talked about in our conversations, um, with the county and city staff. And start by saying, there's a lot on this page and I'm happy to dig in, um, after this presentation with any other planning nerds. Who want to go into it in more depth. Um, but I just wanted to sum up some key points here. Um, first being that there are some really common challenges that occur in community planning in general and that we see all the time. Um, and, and some challenges in city and county coordination. And the first one being that. Effective community planning, which involves having really thorough process and really good engagement. Uh, is expensive. Uh, good process is expensive. And good process requires resources and community engagement and those kinds of things. Unfortunately, are often the first thing to go, um, when we're looking to control for budget costs in, in our planning processes. Um, this is where community builders can make a really significant impact. Um, rather than being hired as traditional consultants, what we do is we come in and we partner financially on projects. So, you know, what I mean by that is we uh, contribute resources to help cover planning costs. Um, and what that does is helps um, enable communities to really invest in what we think are really essential components, like a strong planning process. Really strong community engagement, um, which can be difficult to afford. And what we often see is without investment in some of these processes and this engagement. Uh, we see typically poor engagement overall in the process. Um, leading to a lack of community buy-in. And weak support of the resulting plan. And it's a common reason why a lot of plans fail to be implemented and, and you know, in the end, end up on the shelf. And of, another frequent challenge that we also see. Um, especially when it comes to county and city uh, coordination and alignment, um, is that this interface is just so important. Um, and can often, we can experience or we can see tension and misalignment and vision and strategy and, you know. It's a reason why we require three-mile, um, three-mile plans, but um. There's another issue that we think that this unique approach solves for and, and that's. The challenge at the county-city interface of overlapping public involvement and, and processes that can be confusing. Uh, you know, the average person doesn't think in terms of. Oh, I want to give my feedback to the county about this particular issue and now I also want to give slightly different feedback to the city. About this other related issue, um, you know, it's just not how we typically experience the world is through our jurisdictional boundaries. Um, and in terms of process and engagement, that can be really confusing. So what this approach does is, is help. Um, ask community, help community understand uh, what we're asking them to give feedback and input on. Um, you know, a more integrated, integrated approach also allows us to come up with a more aligned vision. Uh, where the policy and projects that we're talking about at both the county and the city level are all part and parcel of the same vision. Um, and what that does is allow us to work through a lot of regional and local issues where we have a shared vision and a shared value system. As the backbone that guides policy direction and our projects in ways we're, we're aligned towards the same goals. Um, gives us an opportunity for better engagement and then just from a procedural perspective, um. An integrated approach also allows for a more efficient use of resources. Um, where we're leveraging um, county resources, city resources, and also um, the pretty significant contribution. That community builders is able to bring to the table. Um, and allows us to get a lot more done with a lot less, um, than you would typically pay for a traditional. Uh, comprehensive planning effort. Next slide. And I'll just briefly hit here on um, some of the key elements of our approach. So first and foremost, um, this project is going to be really fun. Uh, we're really excited about it. Um, it'll certainly be challenging and the undertaking is large, uh, but the outcomes, I think. Are going to be really meaningful and really lasting because our approach, um, in a lot of ways is just focused on doing good process. Uh, this is a partnership of shared resources and uh, responsibilities and commitment. Um, between the county and the city and also us as community builders. And so like I mentioned, um, we don't operate like a typical consultant, um, but we're more like a guide in the process. So. Uh, we'll roll up our sleeves and we get in there and we work right alongside y'all. Um, you will definitely have ideas that we haven't thought of before, um, and I think vice versa. And we don't just take our, you know, community input and go back to the lab and cook up a bunch of strategies in isolation and, and hand you a plan. Um, you know, this process we think is really exciting because, you know, it involves both the city and the county as partners in. Co-creation of a lot of this overarching strategic framework. And this process is really iterative and um, we do it until we get it right and we're able to engage the community throughout. So. Uh, it sounds really kumbaya, um, but it's because I think that, you know, it's this commitment in the process to meaningful engagement. Um, it can be a scary concept because I think everyone has probably had bad experiences at some point with public involvement when it. Goes left, um, but you know, what's really great about putting all these resources towards processes that. Um, all of us were able to work through some of these really challenging issues rather than skirt around them. Um, and through that, it builds a sense of belonging, it builds our capacity to do this kind of work and this kind of engagement moving forward. In a more effective way. Um, and it builds buy-in in, in a shared vision across the community for the kind of future that we want. Um, and bringing voices to the table of those who don't maybe typically get involved. Um, you know, a project like this is going to hire or require a higher level of collaboration and coordination. Um, not just between the city and the county, but also so critically, the partner, you know, these partnerships with other organizations and institutions. That have been doing, that do such good work in the community. Um, and that are key to actually getting things done, um, once we have the plan all printed and spiral bound. Next slide. Uh, this slide just provides a little bit more information on our partnership and funding model. So I won't stay on here for long. Uh, really, the key takeaway here is that we are largely funded through um, phil- philanthropic fundraising and donor support. Uh, Gates Family Foundation is one of our biggest um, funders for our, for our work. And it's this funding model that we're able to help match local uh, funding contributions to projects to help. Cover project costs. Um, and allow us to invest more heavily in process and some of those things that get expensive and difficult to afford, um, but are so key. To producing quality outcomes in our plans. So next slide. So. Um, we've done this in a lot of places, and so I just wanted to quickly cover two project examples. Um, I wasn't personally involved with these, but um, I, I, I include them because I think they're really representative of the work. Um, to come in Lake County and the city of Leadville. So the first one is Gunnison Valley, if you want to go to the next slide. I, this project was an economic development strategy rather than a comprehensive plan. But I mention it because it was um, one, regional, um, and two. Brought together uh, multiple municipalities that were dealing with really similar issues to you all. Um, and who were struggling with change and uh, the jurisdictions really didn't necessarily agree on how to address it. Um, and they needed help coming together, so. Through the One Valley Prosperity Project. Uh, we helped them design a process where we leaned into grassroots, but also grass tops engagement. Uh, really robust public involvement, um, and, and a key part of this was also a focus on helping them develop the frameworks. For better regional collaboration and coordination, um. I actually got to go back to the valley, uh, maybe two years ago and work on another project, which was an update to this plan. Um, and it's really neat to see that a lot of the structure and the relationships that were built in twenty sixteen are still in place today. Um, and they've had a tremendous amount of success and um, have really become a model for regional planning. Next slide. Uh, more recently, uh, we worked with the town of Silverton, um, and I just wanted to mention this one as well as an example. Of, um, you know, they, they got out of this process, I think, what we're looking to get out of this one, which is a community plan, um, next slide. Uh, this project was about bringing the community together, which was, um, had a lot of division and a lot of conflict. Um, and helped them as, as a community work through these issues and identify a set of shared values and a vision. Um, that then from which we're able to build a strategy, eh, that helps us make that a reality on the ground. So next slide. I think you can go to the next one. I'm moving through this one pretty quickly, um, as I did, I provided more info about this project in the packet. Um, this slide is just an overview of all of the different community outreach and engagement strategies, um, that this process leaned into. And um, it was really cool to see that it produced a very strong plan. Next slide. So, next steps, um, where are we in the process and, and what are we looking to uh, do next? Next slide. So this is just an overview of our community assistance model, um, our model is flexible and we move pieces around, but. Provides really good structure, um, so like I mentioned at the top, we're in the groundwork phase. Uh, so right now what we're doing is we're uh. Hammering out scoping, we're coming up with timelines, we're building support, um, we're inviting feedback on this project. Concept and approach, um, talking about process design and systems. The next stage is um, our assessment and values piece. Um, that is also the, the part where we have the public launch of a project, um, with, you know, website and. Some press and then we really start getting the community involved. Uh, so like I said, we're still hammering out a lot of these different process uh, and procedural pieces. Uh, we anticipate potentially, um, you know, it, having this project move forward that we might be looking for a more public-facing launch, so. We anticipate potentially, um, you know, it having this project move forward that we might be looking for a more public facing launch sometime in the fall. Um, and that's when the project would take wings and or grow wings and take flight. That assessment, you know, that next phase, that assessment phase is also the assessment of existing conditions. Working with the community to identify local assets and leaning into community to help us determine and better understand needs and values. From there, we reach a place where we can start talking about um, goals and vision for the future. What is the direction that we want to head in? What are our hopes and dreams and aspirations for the future and what are our fears as a community? Start to develop the principles to guide local planning. And put together and piece together this vision for the future. From there, the next phase we call is the the strategy and action planning phase. That's where we get to an overarching strategic direction. Where, you know, we talk, we start talking through what are the strategies and what are the actions that take us from. Where we are today to where um, we see this shared vision of the community tomorrow. Um, and that final stage implementation, um, where we talk about how we pull this off. Uh, we talk about capacity and funding. And initiatives and laying processes to make sure that this plan doesn't end up on the shelf. Uh, next slide. So I'll just zip through these. Like I said, we're in the groundwork phase right now. Building out project teams, doing some targeted community outreach, just to um, start to build. Awareness, understanding, some buy-ins, some excitement about this particular project opportunity. Next slide. And uh, following on the heels of that and the um, the scoping phase is the assessment and value stage, which. Anticipate maybe later this fall. And yeah, next slide. I knew I threw, I know I threw a lot of information at you guys. Um, I feel like I've been talking a whole bunch, so I'll stop there. And invite feedback, any questions that you all have on uh, this project proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Does anyone have any questions for? Ms. Murphy about the.
I've got a couple of questions. Brooke, I'm surprised, looking at the challenges that you didn't mention, the fact that we have so much turnover in our elected officials. So I wonder if you could talk a little bit about how this process works with. City county manager, city county staff, and then the elected commissioners and elected city council members, which. Routinely change.
Right, absolutely. That is something that we have been talking about. As we've been thinking through process. You know, and by doing a lot of this engagement and having a lot of these conversations. Early, we hope to lay and really build the support in the community, build understanding amongst staff. That hopefully, um, with all of this buy-in that we build up will help um, bring in new electeds and new turnover. I think that, you know, it's uh, it's something that we see quite often. Um, it's something that we definitely want to account for in our process design and our relationship building. Um, and something that we want to make, you know, I think that is already. Been part of our early outreach and engagement, so I I do appreciate you bringing that up to the. To the top of the discussion, um, you know, it's it's something that's definitely at the forefront of how we're thinking about process.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, one other question, you were talking about the project in Gunnison Valley. And you said it ended up being more of an economic development strategy rather than a comprehensive plan. So I'm wondering if a comprehensive plan could include an economic development strategy. From my personal perspective, I think that's something that Lake County, City of Leadville struggles with with economic development.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so that particular project, um, since it wasn't a comprehensive plan, it kind of hung out at. I would say one level up where it was more of a um, strategic framework. And so what this comprehensive planning effort would allow us to do is to dig into in a more technical sense, some of those other key. Strategic priorities. Um, I think that an economic development strategy would probably be a really big piece of that. I think some other, you know, early. Things that we think might come up and be a big part of this comprehensive plan are things like land use. Again, at that county-city interface, um, things like housing, things like outdoor recreation and open space. So I I do agree, I I think that economic development strategy is probably going to be a pretty crucial piece of this.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I got. Well, there are other questions for Ms. Murphy. Go ahead, Christian.
Uh, so general timeline of what next steps are for phase one, is this going to be a multi-year process? Or are you anticipating it to be a lot quicker after phase one gets done?
Yeah, great question. Um, so like I mentioned, we're still hammering out our timeline and in our scoping. I think that we imagine this project probably being. Maybe a year and a half. So uh, between fourteen, sixteen months to get from. Where we are today to having like that plan uh, delivered at the the end. So thinking winter twenty twenty-five probably.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Last questions.
I think my question is more for city staff, probably. Can you give some context on comprehensive plans? What is it? Why do we need it? And is this, is this the decision we're going with or are there other options on the table?
Yes and yes. Alright, so uh, yeah, thanks for um, kind of noting some of those considerations, so. You know, I would say that your comprehensive plan is essentially. A year, a guiding document for um, a lot of. What what you want your community to look like in the future. And as Brooke kind of hinted, this can be land, you know, this definitely includes land use, it's often land use heavy. And which informs other decisions like zoning. You know, the physical built environment, what that looks like in five years, ten years, etc. But it can, it can also go into other programs like childcare, for example, and she mentioned some others like open spaces and recreation, etc. But it is often oftentimes the land use heavy. I would say that oftentimes the city planners, you know, graduate grad school, a lot of them go into local government, spend a lot of time in development review, but the others go into private consulting. For firms that really specialize in comprehensive planning, because it really is a specialty. So how that would affect us day to day is let's say two years from now, we have. An adopted or updated comprehensive plan. And a land use rezoning request comes in front of me and it's very contentious. There's frozen comments to that request, and you're really struggling with how with how to decide on that rezoning request. Your comprehensive plan will guide you on how to do that. And uh, so for example, if you could think of something in the in the kind of the interface between our city boundary and the county. Having a comprehensive plan that is, um, that was a joint effort between city and county, if we have a. What a rezoning decision that is very difficult. This this document can guide you on on how to do that, and so. Other projects that staff will be working on for the next ten years after that comprehensive plan is updated. You will provide that, you will provide that guidance for future staff, for future future city council members. Um, and making those decisions on code updates, on zoning map updates, etc. So that is, um, I think an answer to one of your questions.
Are we required to have one?
Yes, statutory required every ten years. We'll have a little bit of flexibility, so if we don't have it updated in twenty twenty-five, um, that's okay if we can demonstrate to the state that we're actively working on that. That can roll into twenty twenty-six. The other, did that answer? Your questions, Cisco?
Yes.
I I think that was at least one answer, um, maybe this answers the second question here. If we were to. Hire a consultant, um, you know, in today's market, we're going to be spending north of a hundred thousand dollars, so I would. As we're entering entering budget season, I would need to come to you with a request. Significant request to hire a consultant in twenty twenty-five to work on the statute of totally required update. So as Brooke mentioned, you know, the more information will be coming on how we can leverage funds with a nonprofit. To significantly reduce that cost to the city and strategically figure out when we want to, um, uh, you know. Provide our financial input into that into that partnership. Um, I have some more thoughts, but I think those are answers to your questions.
And so this, I was reading through. Would this be less expensive because they bring matching funds? Or some matching funds?
Yes.
The way I, one of the things I learned about the comprehensive plans, and this is called a comprehensive plan or a general plan, it's your constitution. So if you think in, it doesn't have to spell everything out, but it spells out your, uh, a- as our planning director said, sort of your. Your principles and guidelines for how you want your city to look with, for its transportation growth, lots of other elements. So usually a general plan has multiple elements. Certain elements are are being added by communities, but there are certain elements that are required. And so it's your constitution and then your zoning and your other. The permitting is is sort of your. Regulations, as you would say, they can't come, they can't conflict. And generally, uh, a community cannot conflict with its general plan. So you can't say, we are going to make this area. We intend for this to be residential in our general plan and and then go and and have industrial put in it. So the analysis you'll get from staff reports is will generally have a sentence in it that says. This is, you know, staff recommends you approve this, it is consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. All of that was great. Um, when was the last one we had?
Twenty fifteen, it actually was a joint comprehensive plan, it was done by RPI Consulting. Joint comprehensive plan between the city and county with uh, with separate. There's a joint planning effort with separate documents that were produced out of that. You know, just to have a lot of thoughts as you're thinking about this. In terms of going into twenty twenty-five, thinking about the amount of change that we've had in the last ten years. You know, we have a unique opportunity, we are one city within one county. So, you know, I think a lot of people said we are one community, uh, so it definitely speaks to, um, you know, one of the reasons why we couldn't consider this partnership. With with the county. I I didn't want to forget that, um. Brooke would like, has expressed interest in actually in uh, in terms of these initial stages, stages before we come back to you in September for an action item. To consider a um, a partnership agreement, would like to meet with you one-on-one if if you would like that. So she is going to be, um, and I'll let her go into this if you'd like, she's going to be in town on Friday. And then, uh, if you would like to meet in person, she's also offered to schedule one-on-one Zoom meetings, um, to fit your schedule. And then could even come back in town sometime in the next few weeks or a month, um, and and uh, do another in-person meeting possibly. So very, very interested in getting your feedback on what was presented tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Cheepen. Yeah, um, we will be in town, myself and our executive director, Clark Anderson, will be in town. On Friday, would, um, you know, definitely love to offer up time to anyone who would like to speak some more with us. See if we can help answer any questions, talk over, you know, any concerns and invite feedback and suggestions at this early stage. Um, and yeah, absolutely, if this Friday doesn't work, I know that everyone, um, for the most part has. Nine to five and other jobs and commitments and family, um, and this Friday is coming up very fast, so. We definitely also want to offer up the opportunity to arrange uh, virtual meetings and have those discussions, um, you know. Informally, formally, however, um, works best for y'all moving forward.
I think we have another question from the council or head.
Uh, yes, so you mentioned that we would have to hire a consultant. For custom builders. Be that consultant if we went through this proposal? Or we have to hire additional consultant?
No, we're not have to hire additional consultant.
Okay, and then at the cost, it says here that. It would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And require financial contribution from each community. Um, do you have an idea of what? Contribution would be from the city and the county?
I would say I can take that one, Cheepen. Um, so that uh, estimate is very back of the, well, I wouldn't say back of the napkin. It's a pretty good ballpark of what we think, um, this project would cost. And that is, um, using our very discounted nonprofit rates, so. Um, that hundred thousand. If we use that as our our jumping off point would be, um, for the entire process and project. Community builders is often able to bring up to a fifty percent match. That will have to be hammered out in terms of, um, some of the next steps, but. Then that remaining amount, um, we would have some conversations between the county and city on what each wants to contribute of the remaining. Funding, so that would be the uh, remaining fifty thousand, um, divided up in some way between the county and the city.
Are there any other questions for, any other questions for Ms. Murphy from council? Steve, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to comment.
I'm going to limit you.
Okay, the prior plans. For this. Comprehensive plan. The one that came out nineteen eighty, middle of the eighties. Talked about combining city and government based on the fact of the climax closure and money being tight. Then the recent one, two thousand and fifteen, didn't reference that, but did reference combining city and county government. As I think a goal. And uh, then the goal was, the P and Z version of that, then the goal was ordered down to where you could figure that out in the uh. One that the city eventually issued. Um, I'm really against having the county and the city work together on this. We are in a real development, developer amount of dominated government. And a lot of these things, like for instance, uh, there was a thing to put sidewalks on my neighborhood. Two of the politicians, Sarah Mudge and, I mean, uh. Ms. Mudge and Sarah Dallas appeared at this meeting, it was supposed to be for the community, well, their argument was, well, we're community members. But they're po- politicians and they had, you know, their own agendas, they shouldn't have been at that meeting. Anyway, they voted to put sidewalks in my neighborhood and nobody in my neighborhood wanted sidewalks, nobody, I I was the only person against it. But that got pushed through. And when I talk about the. Let me shift gears here, the the cost of this, so real estate and this short-term economy, the um. Recreation thing is is the industry that drives our economy right now. This doesn't benefit people like me or uh, people on short incomes. Um, I think we should have some industry looking at this A I industry. That's a big thing right now in Colorado region. And think about working with the county in this as far as putting some land out for. Dedicated this kind of industry and funding for that. The police department, I think we really need to have two separate police departments. One that covers.
Steve, I think you're kind of leaving the topic of the comprehensive plan, can I have you put those comments to public comment at the end of the meeting?
Well, let me say one more thing then. The cost of this. We could do this comprehensive plan ourselves, we don't have to hire an agency to help us do this. Um, I looked at this in two thousand and fifteen, there's a set, a set of things that the statutes require. This, this doesn't need, uh, we can do this ourselves and utilize that money for other things. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Last question. No, no, don't repeat, don't repeat. Very quickly, Brooke, how can we get in touch with you to set up a meeting on Friday?
Yeah, absolutely. You can um, get in touch with Cheepen, he can give you my email address and um, we can, we can do it that way.
Alright, great, thanks.
I'll send an email to the council members who are contacted.
Thank you very much, Cheepen. Thank you, Ms. Murphy, for the presentation, it was very informative.
Great, thank you all so much for your time, look forward to chatting with you in the future.
Alright, let's move on to my favorite part. One of my favorite parts of these meetings, department reports. Let's begin with the city of Minnsheil.
You know, so this one's going to be a long one, there's a lot of things going on regarding the sales tax. Uh, that is not on our agenda for discussion tonight, it is scheduled for our work session on the thirtieth. Uh, we are running an ad in the newspaper this week and next week notifying the public of that meeting so they can attend. As you, uh, city council has seen a draft of the survey has been circulated and uh, we have received comments, I forward them on to Ryan. We want to send the survey out tomorrow, so I will be letting Ryan know that we want to send the survey. Uh, we want to send the survey out tomorrow, so I will be letting Ryan know that we want to send the survey out tomorrow. That timeline will hopefully keep us on track to have the survey results available so we can discuss them on the thirtieth. The. Uh, next deadlines that we need to keep aware of. Are that, uh, we will be consulting with the Department of Local Affairs, um, on the twenty, July twenty sixth. Just to let them know that we are considering this. Uh, our city attorney is able to do that for us and so, uh, we, we don't necessarily need to do anything more on that point. We can consult with the Department of Local Affairs. And then decide not to run a sales tax, but we have to consult with them by the twenty sixth. So after that, the next step, if the city decides to proceed with the sales tax would be. Uh, we would need to call the special election by resolution, so that would need to be something on our agenda. And then, of course, we would need an ordinance, passing a sales tax, so that would be a first reading and a second reading. We are working with, uh, our city attorney on those deadlines and I know this is all very, uh. A lot of information, but I think we're on, on track. I think the important thing is to get that survey out and get the information so we can make an informed decision. I have several other topics to cover, lots of other topics, but I was, will pause for a second to see if there's any questions on that one in particular.
Questions on this hot issue of the moment.
So people have been asking, has the city decided, obviously you all know, we, we have not, we had some information presented to us, we've had a work session. Um, the idea would not be to be making any decision at the work session, because we can't do that, but to provide some guidance to staff. Should we, um, want to, council want to start us drafting? Um, we, we have started the process of, of doing a template for the sales tax, but give us some direction, staff some direction if you want to proceed with that. And so you can let folks know that no decision has been made.
I, um, was just wondering if the city attorney would also be noticing the county clerk about our potential. Interest, because I think, wasn't that also a requirement?
I, I, I confirm that, um, with our city attorney, uh, Hillary Graham today, it, it. I think that got. What am I gonna say, um? Our, our, our wires may have had a little cross in some of the communication. We need to communicate with the county clerk about our participation in the election and we have done that by way of our resolution. Um, coordinating the election with the county. So we have notified the county that we are, um, we're participating in the election to the extent of the I G A. So that official box has been checked, but of course, we obviously need to keep the county clerk informed as we get further down the line. So I was informed today, we have actually checked that box. Um, and also our deputy city clerk and I are meeting with, um. Our county clerk next week to just discuss election coordination. So if we don't have a sales tax measure on the ballot, the city would not have anything on the ballot, we have no council vacancies or other, uh. We don't have finance or, I'm sorry, treasure or city clerk vacancies. So if we don't have a sales tax measure on the ballot or something else, you, we would not have any of them.
Mayor for Ten Third has a question.
Thanks, um. What is the deadline for P B Swims to call their measure?
Well, technically, the ballot language has to be finalized, I think, by September sixth. So in coordination with the county clerk, you would probably need to be coordinating with that office. In time to either let them know you want the ballot measure language to run or not. So right now, it sounds like the P B Swims has submitted their signatures, they would just need to be validated and, uh. Then if they are, if they do have enough ballot signatures, they could proceed to the next step. But they would need to let the county clerk know before the ballot language needs to be finalized, which is September sixth.
Thanks. Is there any possibility that if they missed that deadline and we put our measure on that, both measures would appear on the ballot?
If they missed the deadline to pull it?
Yeah.
And we put something on the ballot? Yes. Yes.
Well, I honestly can't speak for P D Swims, but I'd imagine that they would have a conversation with us before they even put it on the ballot in the first place.
We've had good communication. Yeah, I think that we, we definitely, uh. Obviously, Ms. Ironton came today and expressive and, uh, willingness to coordinate and, and work with us, we've definitely been in the same place, so. Uh, we, we don't wanna have confusion out there, um, it may happen, but we're all, it sounds like we're all on the same page to work towards that not happening.
Okay, thank you.
For the questions on that?
Sales tax task force, okay, there you go, last time. Okay, we, uh, moving on to a completely different subject, but just as important and just as gigantic. Uh, we are looking into a different short-term rental vendor. Uh, we. Uh, we had acquired of. Mini Revs' parent company Gov O S, they can help us on the accommodations tax collection issue and we had a meeting and. Uh, I'm, I'm just like, I wasn't satisfied with their answer. I knew there was a way out there that someone could help us with this and so at our conference, um, the mayor, uh, identified Deckard Inc. As a potential other vendor. We had a meeting with them, they're used by a number of other municipalities, uh. Essentially, it's very promising, their. Their platform, uh, it, it looks good, but one of the key things is. It really sounded like it can help us with the accommodations tax collections issue, so they can do, some cities use all of their modules, but they do have the, the. The client side, the, the short-term rental owner side of the platform and then, of course, the backend side that the, the municipalities use. Some cities only use them for one portion, other cities use them for all portions. Uh, we would be looking at using it to replace Muni Rev slash Gov O S as far as the client portal and then the backend of the portal. And. I, I, I knew something new is magic, but essentially they have some magic that's proprietary, they won't tell us how they do it. But they can, I, so if you go on an Airbnb, you don't get the address of the property, they have enough. I don't know, A I, whatever else we get spied on about, to, to associate that property with an address. And then they will generate a report for us that says, here's the property. Here's how many days it was rented this month, they won't tell us how they do that, but they have proprietary technology that will tell. Was that?
It is legal.
Yes. To say, to determine how many days that property was rented and then they will tell us how much tax has been collected. Or how much tax we should have been paid. So that'll, that'll help us, I'm not as concerned, I mean, I think going forward, there may be some properties that need to be educated about this, but as far as going backwards. The question really was when this tax was first rolled out, were we under collecting, um? So the answer is they can go backwards. So they could tell us, it's, their, their answer was they can go back as far as that property shows up on the internet. So we would need to go back to twenty twenty one, but they can go back to the, the first time that property was listed. To, you know, on any platform out in the internet, so it can definitely go back that far. Um, so we met with them, the. So they could go backwards and tell us what potentially we under collected, the, the. Uh, I think the, um, our finance director ran some of the numbers, I think we collected just. Under our three hundred thousand dollar limit for twenty twenty one, is that correct? We, uh, so we had a, a limit, a table limit of three hundred thousand dollars that first year. So we said, we're gonna pass this new tax and if we collect more than three hundred thousand dollars the first year, you taxpayers, or whatever it is, we'll, we'll pay it back to you. We did not hit that limit, it was under that limit, so I, you know, if. We're not typing gigantic numbers, it's, it's, uh, we don't really think the under collection is substantial. I think some of the numbers we saw was like seventeen thousand dollars. So this would be great, because it, it would be part of their platform, uh, it, the cost for this. The whole program may be slightly more than Muni Revs. But our internal meetings with staff, we felt like it helps us manage the short-term rentals better. And more efficiently and that helps us collect our revenues more efficiently with less staff time that we think it's worth it. So we've had some, uh, several internal meetings, uh, we are at this point checking references from other cities who use this. And that, um, our new deputy city clerk. Um, is inclined to go this direction, uh, because she is also, she's new and that this would be a fresh platform for her. The only transition would be, it's a big one, it would be transitioning all the property owners to a different platform. Let's see. Did I miss anything on?
No, I was just gonna say, like, for addressing that particular bit, transition, like. They also in, have it, like, an introductory. Notice baked in that we can help craft so that there are no surprises in that all the current.
Right. Yeah, Deckers helps with the transition substantially, I mean, obviously, they, but they, they. They do more than assist, I think we do quite a bit of handholding to make sure it's not painful.
And I, I, the, the other thing that I, because I think that this particular platform does an awful lot to plug some of the knowledge gaps. That we had, have through our current platform, um, and like. The city administrator alluded to, I think, would make us much more efficient and much more effective at. Collecting the accommodations tax, but another thing which is, um, which is an optional add-on, which would be part of, like, what would make it more. Expensive than Muni Revs is, um, is they do have the option of like an online complaint form. Right now, we don't really have a process or a procedure to receive complaints from, uh, say neighbors. Of the short terminals, um, and if we had that information, it would greatly ease the. The process of developing an internal mechanism by which we get those complaints either reported or responded to. So I just, yeah, I, I was, I was highly wounded.
The, the one thing I wanted to, I, I, in, in light of the discussion about the sales tax, I've heard that there is. Um, some, I think, meritless opinion that the city has not managed accommodation tax appropriately. Uh, and that we, uh. We haven't been diligent about collecting it. I, I'm gonna tell you, I don't think the numbers of, of what we've collected are substantially under collected. Uh, if we're talking a maximum of three hundred thousand dollars, I, I don't think we're talking a huge sum of money. It doesn't justify a full-time person, one of the ideas was to hire a full-time person to just do short-term rentals and tax collection. I'm gonna tell you, it's not worth hiring a full-time employee to chase down seventeen thousand dollars. However, this type of system would be great going forward, that we can manage and it gives us the tools. And the, the, the software company does the magic to find out who's renting. And what they should owe us, and then it's just for us as a matter, a matter of using that platform to contact the property owners if they're not. Remitting the income, which would be, I think, a lot easier for us. So I, I wanna say in light of the sales tax conversation, I do not think there's any merit to the city has under collected tons of money on accommodations tax. I do not think that is true, uh, but if there is any under collection, we can correct that. Which I think is good news.
I just have one quick question, so you, you talked a lot about the benefit and I appreciate the benefit for staff time, the efficiency of tracking and collecting. It sounds like the benefit in terms of tax dollars is relatively small, like no more than seventeen thousand per year.
So that, you would be, I think would be less than that, I would think it would be seventeen thousand for the first year and I do not think we've under collected. At seventeen thousand at all for the next, the, the subsequent years, I don't think.
So then what's the cost of Decker?
The cost of that was not.
So some of it depends on how many add-ons you, you choose, right now for Muni Revs. I just signed a nine thousand plus dollar check for part of the year and you, I think you estimated they were. Maybe just under twenty? I feel like it was sixteen thousand.
I think, I think if we do all the add-ons when we were talking, it was only gonna be, it was only about three to four more than Muni Revs. But the package was more encompassing, the Muni Revs' package was kind of limited, um, as far as like training add-ons and things like that. So, um, I think sixteen.
Right, three to four thousand dollars per year.
Oh.
And, yep.
So a twenty-five percent increase.
Uh, correct, if we go with all the packages and.
Essentially more efficient and much more efficient of staff time.
So for example, we've been having a great deal of difficulty getting some of the information out of the Muni Revs' data that we need. And in order to better understand how to use the system, you have to do a training with Muni Revs, which costs money. Um, actually.
It's like nine hundred bucks.
Yeah.
We, we looked into getting some training for our new deputy city clerk and they told us nine hundred bucks. So yes, I think it is an additional cost, but I'm hoping. I also think Muni Revs' responsiveness, um, a- again, it's Gov O S now, i- i- it's been mediocre. Many, but many cities, I'm not, many cities use Muni Revs, it is not that it, that we are. I don't live with them, but. There, hopefully it's something better.
Well, I also think we don't know if or how much we're missing potentially, because we've never been able to do any sort of audit. Accommodations taxes, so.
But it's all on the owner's system.
Right, and it has been for the three years that we've been doing it. This would give us, it sounds like, a way to actually audit and compare what we're getting to what we think we should be getting. And so that seems very valuable to me.
A- and, and the other thing too is, again, they're gonna give us data on what they believe these, you know, the property has been rented. A property owner may dispute that and we may need to figure out that process. But I'm assuming that they have some statistically, uh, uh. Valid method where we could defend our, you've rented this twenty-three days a month and if the property owner disputes it, we can figure out a way to resolve that.
It might at least, I like, places that should be looked into more by, by say, I don't know, a C S O or something or, or whoever. But, um, otherwise, it's hard to know which properties to.
Yeah, and I mean, just, this does, it has multiple ways to look at data, but one of them is a table with the. With the particular properties, like, have there been complaints, are they, are they, do they have all their paperwork filled out? Have, you know, how much tax do they owe, how much tax have they paid, it, it will actually flag those things for you.
Uh, my question along those lines, um. Uh, I think general enforcement of S T Rs has been honor system, period. Uh, sounds like this would be a potential way to address that, just through, uh, I, I was wondering, would we be, um, ready? And this is more a question, uh, for our, uh, city clerk, but. Uh, would we be ready to be able to jump on that as soon as we make that transition? Uh, for enforcement reasons, uh, whether it be like time to reach out to those S T Rs that maybe don't have a license. I'm imagining this could help in those scenarios, uh, but sure, or any other like enforcement needed basis, are we like, ready to do that?
So my understanding of this platform is they will help you up until the citation stage.
Nice.
So they have template letters, they have, uh, I'm assuming a way to push those out to the property owners. Well, but my understanding from their training was they will take you all the way up till the point where you're going to take some to court. They, they will, they will assist you with tools, they're not gonna actually like, you know. They will give us the tools to get all the way up to that point.
But, but one of the, you know, the add-ons is like, do you want them to mail the letters or do you wanna download the form there?
That was all I wanted to add, was that there is one of those add-on pieces, is this really great outreach program that does help us with compliance? And I love that, um, they, they will email, mail, contact our non-compliant, um, S T R folks. And I apologize, I'm really trying to speak loud, I hope you guys can hear me, um, but that was one of the add-ons that. We didn't even have the option of for Muni Revs, really, um, so I think that's another really good benefit. Um, with our staffing issue, um, situation right now, it would just be nice to have an. Extra push to help with our compliance situation.
Sounds a lot better.
Then we're in a position now, where the city clerk has to train on one platform or the other, so changing, it remains that we don't have to double it up.
Correct, and that was a point that she raised, I think that that is big for us, that we're not transitioning from an old way of doing things to a new way. Everything's new to her, or I think she, yeah, like, definitely, uh, Ms. Bushman's dug in, learned as much as she can about Muni Revs. But it, it wouldn't be a substantial learning curve issue, the learning curve comes from the, um, property owners.
One last question, uh, in terms of timing, what are we looking at, what's next steps are required?
Right, so that is a great question, I was gonna mention that, our next steps are, we're gonna check a few more. Right, so that is a great question, I was gonna mention that our next steps are, we're gonna check a few more references, a few more uh towns and cities that use. Their platform and make sure that people are generally happy with it. And at that point, then you'll see a contract probably come before you because I. I I have to see the dollar amount, but I think we calculated uh that, you know, fifteen thou contracts about fifteen thousand dollars you all need to see. So I'm I'm assuming that you will need to see the contract and then we can get that before you buy a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
There's, there's still a lot more. There's still.
We're trying to hold ourselves back and let you make progress.
Uh so other things that we really need to uh address because it's become a priority, I've mentioned to you several times. We have a number of our police vehicles that are down, which is very unfortunate because some of the one, they are some of the ones we are still leasing. So uh we are working with Enterprise Fleet Management, uh regarding a fleet management program for the entire city, I think I've mentioned before. Traditionally, each department has run its own fleet, buys on vehicles. You know, project when vehicles need to be replaced or just. Replace them. So what we wanna do is create a fleet management program for the city uh where. We know the age and lifespan of our, all of our current vehicles and we prioritize what vehicles need to be replaced immediately. Versus what vehicles need to be replaced in twenty twenty five and then we can budget for those and then twenty twenty six. And then we get on a program where Enterprise does our fleet management and they tell us, you're gonna lease these vehicles for. Five years or a hundred thousand miles and we're just gonna cycle them out, which works well for them because at that point the vehicles have enough equity that. It makes sense for them to just rotate them out and we get new vehicles. So we're, we're working on that program, we're we're past the point where we know what our existing fleet is. Surprisingly, that took quite a bit of time to figure out what our existing fleet is. And now we're, Enterprise is working with each of the individual departments to prioritize what vehicles need to be replaced. I'm gonna tell you, the police department is gonna come first. We got to the point two weeks ago where uh people were having share vehicles. So our number, a number of our vehicles are down and they're going to be very expensive to repair, so the question is, do we repair them? Uh are, is there enough equity in the vehicle to justify that? Enterprise advises on one of the vehicles, we should repair them and just get rid of it. But we're, that's where we are, is we're working, each department is now working individually with Enterprise to prioritize. And then what you all will see in your budget is for next year, what budget cost we're gonna have to replace some vehicles. And then we'll have a plan, so if you know, in the fire department, they have an excellent capital management plan where they say, here's where we are, here's what we need to replace in the next few years. You're gonna see that for our passenger vehicles. We're not gonna do it for heavy equipment, but that's the plan. I'm hoping that we can replace some vehicles in twenty twenty four, our our department's doing very well on their budgets. I would love to be able to squeeze in a vehicle or two, especially since some of these vehicles that are dying, we're already leasing. So if we can sell those vehicles and actually get rid of those payments. And have a new payment for a new vehicle that's not substantially more, I'd like to try and, so we're gonna figure out where we, what we can do in twenty twenty four. And then what we're gonna budget for for twenty twenty five, but. We have. Several vehicles for the police department just sitting in the shop waiting for us to make a decision on whether or not we're gonna get rid of them or repair them. And the same is true with the Tahoe, the city hall's Tahoe that staff uses, it is completely down. And. Ideally, would have three or four thousand dollars worth of repairs. Some are necessary, some are probably. Down the road proactive, so we need to decide whether or not that is a vehicle, it's a priority to be cycled out. Or should we just do the minimal repairs and limp it through for a couple of years? So this is what we're getting Enterprise to help us with. Um. I think that, let's see, other things, you all saw the email, the community justice center at the Monroe site is dead. Uh the county will not be developing on that site, they're looking at. Either rehabbing their own building uh on uh just down the street or they are looking at the Lake County Intermediate School. But the Monroe location is not, is not viable. Uh. So uh if you all don't know, the the. Uh the visitor center is moving out of the building across the street. They have signed a new lease with the um Kleenex building down um the street is unclear when they're gonna be moving out of that building. But just a few things to think about, we still, the city still has some obligations over there that we need to kind of figure out. Um whether or not things continue, we pay for utilities over there. Uh we also do clean, we clear the parking lot in the winter and um. We also uh have insurance on the parklet there, so we need to figure out how that works. Uh as the visitor center folks transition out of there. Those were the eyes on the parklet. So Katie Hill, that visitor center, would let us know if there's something going on with the parklet, let us know if it needed attention, let us know those volunteers at the visitor center. So that those tenants move out, we need to figure out how to create those eyes on that building that we would have there before. Uh we're looking at security cameras, so the visitor center does have security private cameras that cover the parklet, I mean the. The bathrooms, but we'll need to figure out if we need additional cameras there and potentially what uh the relationship looks like with. You know, tenants or um. Yeah, so a little bit to iron out there. The visitor center is moving to the bank building. You know that bank building, the climate spot, they're gonna be in the downstairs portion of that.
Yes, um is there any, do you know of any plan for anyone to move into that building at the moment or?
Uh. The chamber, okay, so it's complicated. The Chamber of Commerce actually has a lease on that building for ninety nine years. Uh the Civic Center Association believes that Chamber has breached that lease and is no longer valid, that is for them to work out. Um I do not.